Yep.
All right, operations and maintenance.
You're first.
You're first.
All right. To begin with, just a reminder slash update that at the next meeting, April 3rd, I will be bringing forward the Centennial Trail agreement for your approval. Sean is reviewing it as we speak and it should be ready by the next meeting. And also, we've formatted an three-year contract with the Power Spectacular Fireworks Company. Per recommendation of council, we're fine with that, holding the same price for three years. And then obviously, there will be an adjustment at the end of the three years, but that will also be coming to you for approval, April 3rd.
And that's roughly, end of statements about 500 in two years, is that right? Because we're going for three years?
Well, it's hard to say, it's hard for me to say how much it saves us. What it does is it holds the price, different from inflation.
Right. But basically, inflation that we saw.
Yeah, yeah, at least that.
Yeah.
And depending on what inflation would be.
Good.
So Jen, just for the purpose of the clarification, so we're gonna get the same show we did last year, and it'll be 11,500?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then that price is held for three years.
Right.
And they, and they don't, um, they don't, we do a repeat of the same exact show every year because they think it's too big one. So the show will look a little bit different in terms of variety. Yes.
But this year, it'll be smaller?
No, it's anticipated to be the same size as last year.
Same size.
Linealized.
Yeah.
So for the same dollar amount, we're gonna have the same amount of fireworks? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, that's what they're, that's what they're doing there.
So Mike, uh, Councilmember Kennedy, last year, we paid 10,000. We got a lot of things that they actually upped it to closer to 12. Then by doing a three-year contract, it's about 11,500, every year for three years. It's the same amount of explosives, yeah.
Thank you.
And then, this year has been an interesting year for programming, recreational programming. We have had several vendors approach us on wanting to do programs in our city parks. Several, I mean, two, and then, which is more than last year. And then one group, our Skyhawks group, is wanting to expand what they currently have. So that's, that's three groups that wanna have programs in our parks that are new, or in addition to, and, and, which actually turns out to be a lot, three doesn't sound like a lot. But by the time you put it all on the calendar, it gets very busy. So you may see some contracts coming forward, or agreements in the next, hopefully, April 3rd, for these programs, to be able to provide some programming in our parks. And it's all the contracts similar to Skyhawks and Childland Sports where it's the 80/20, the city takes 20% of the renovation fees in exchange for, you know, delivering a field or a facility in the parks. And lastly, oh, one thing I think is really cool this year, the Barefoot, the Barefoot group got together at our last meeting, and we were trying to, we were talking about vendors in our park for the, for the Barefoot event, and how can we encourage people to come out? Last year, we limited the group, and then past year, in tradition, to kinda limit the amount of vendors to 20. And I, I kinda, I kinda said, well, why is that? And I said, why can't we just fill the park? You know, just fill the park. And it's gonna take some programming at every corner of the park to get people to, you know, encourage to go to every corner of the park. But the group agreed that it was a good idea to, in a way to support our local city businesses, to provide a free, um, free admission for local city business vendors. So that we knew this year, last year, we charged a fee. Mara at Popular Partners is heading up the vendor side of things. But we're hoping to get quite a few local businesses out at Pavilion Park. If they're there for two hours, if they're there the whole day, you know, at least we're offering them something for the community to come out and support their local vendors and their local businesses. Uh, we're still charging a fee for out-of-the-city businesses, valley businesses and such. So I know that it's been voiced here to, you know, how do we support our local businesses? As a group, we felt that was a good way to do that.
I agree.
And then I'll turn it over to Stephen, he has an update on decorating, is it the grader of the backhoe?
Cut all?
Lease equipment for snow.
You know, we brought this to you guys, you know, about a month ago, and I, there was a couple of questions, and I have those answered. As far as subleasing out, if we decided after a year we don't want it, we can't sublease it out for the rest of the remainder. We can lease it out, you know, for a few months to, say, Spokane Valley, Spokane County. We can rent it out to them, and ultimately, we still are responsible for it. As far as getting out of the lease, it's kinda like making, missing a car payment, still a ding on your credit, and you still technically owe the money. So, I mean, there's that. And then as far as, it's a cumulative hour, so you get 1,500 hours over the three years. So if only you use 400, 400 hours in one year, 550 the next, you're still under that allotted amount. So we do plan on bringing this back for approval on April 3rd to you guys. Just wanna see if there's any more questions or concerns that might have arisen since the last conversation with this, so I can try and get those answered. If I don't have answers, contact whoever and try and get them answered best.
Thanks for bringing it back.
Okay.
And then, did you wanna provide an update on the current equipment?
Oh, yeah, um, I was gonna send it back this week, but if you guys have been looking at the forecast, it's not looking pretty. I'd rather have it and not need it than not have it and need it. So anticipation right now, forecast is looking much better middle, the end of next week. But I'll probably, there's somewhere to take that. I've already sent one piece of equipment home, saving us a little money 'cause if we can get by with just the three that we have now instead of the four, so. But everything will be going back and will be gearing up for summertime now.
With the, uh, we've talked a while back about the north field at the elementary school. And we talked about the possibility of putting in like around $2,500, if I remember right, to put in some natural grass and just kinda let nature take its course, and then kinda maintain it after we graded it. And I know that there was another option for around $3,500 total to, you know, playable grass, have a stricker system that goes like this. With the second option, what will we have to do to start watering this?
We have the pot, the option to buy the big athletic field sprinklers. You see on the football fields and the large-scale athletic fields. They'll, they'll water to about 160 feet swaths, 80 to 160 feet, depending on what sprinkler you buy. So we, we would use those as a temporary solution.
And what would you hook it up to?
We're researching that right now, but we would tap into the existing Liberty Creek Elementary School. The irrigation goes all the way north as far as the 60-foot strip that's existing right now, and we would look at tapping into that system. They do have a booster pump, um, to be able to support the volume, to put that much water out.
What do you mean when you say temporary?
Well, I say temporary because in, in an ideal world, in a public setting, a top field, a rolling top field sprinkler, or an impact sprinkler that you can move around, is not an ideal permanent solution for a field. It's a temporary solution, so that we could at least get some grass growing, versus installing a full underground system, that's more of a permanent solution.
Are you, do you feel that the idea that if we use a temporary, would be natural to go to a permanent system as time goes on?
Uh, yeah, yes, yes, absolutely.
If I could add a little bit of perception that we've been working on with staff, is that we had talked about just grading it with our crew, putting down some native grasses, no irrigation, just let it, dust control, we control, those kinds of things. And I think the estimate, Jen, on that was about 2,500.
Yeah.
So the question came up, and it's basically, it's native grasses, brown and all those things. But the erosion and the dust control is there, um, and we control. The another option is to seed it and put in an irrigation, an above-ground irrigation system, which you could do for about $1,000 more. So instead of being 2,500, I think Jen, you've estimated about 3,000, maybe 3,500. And then it could be more like your lawn. It's not a turf like your park, it'd be more like a lawn. But now it's more usable, it's green, people can run on it, throw a frisbee, those kinds of things. And it accomplishes the same thing, and in this case, we have crews up there mowing anyway, and the water, the water bill is paid for by the school district. So when we say interim and temporary, I think, we don't know, 'cause we haven't finished our priorities as, you as a council, you don't know, you know, exactly what the long-term solution is. This could buy us three or four years of doing this, and figure out, what do we wanna do? Do, do we wanna do something different up there? But it gives us a little bit, green lawn area, and it's about three acres, if I'm not mistaken, about three acres of lawn, green, and it's not a huge impact to our staff or costs, and it's only a little bit more than just doing native grasses. So that's kinda what we're thinking about, and it would give us time to figure out more long-term what the council wants to do with it.
Well, with the idea of, of that land, I, I supported from the start. It made sense to grade it, we had the machinery, we had the employees, it stopped really costing like 2,200, 2,500, no. I'm still in support of that, I guess my concern is, sometimes things take a life of their, of their own, starts developing. You know, first I heard it was gonna be, we didn't have to water it, and it would just be natural. The idea of get rid of the dirt and the rocks and all that, totally support that. Now I'm hearing it's evolving into this.
It's another option.
Where is it evolving to?
So it's not evolving, councilmember, I would say, one option is to stick with that original plan and not water it. Another option is to spend about seven, by, how much more?
A thousand more.
About $1,000 more and have it green. So it's not evolving, is, either is still an option.
Just two options, the other, the natural grass, we're gonna have to water it, you just let the rain.
Right.
I think there are a lot of other options, I think, for, for that property that we haven't explored as yet, and I, I don't think the option has been approved by council that we're going to have play fields there. I'm also concerned about putting grass in there and not controlling the parking for the, for the ballfields. I don't wanna put grass in there and then have cars park on our grass that we're watering and maintaining.
It's behind a fence, it's fenced, Jen.
Okay, do we already have a fence there?
Yes.
Can we approve that?
School player probably here. School put it in.
We paid half in, right? Didn't we pay half of that, school didn't?
Correct, we split the cost of the fence on Blue.
All right, the point is that we haven't really decided or concluded what our priorities are going to be, and that's one of the, one of the items we have for consideration. So I, I don't wanna do anything, spend a lot of money on something if we're not gonna end up using it for that purpose.
I would like to go back to the original, one of the original thoughts was that if we have the land, we own the land. I'm comfortable with us, as I said a little bit earlier, moving ahead and do something with grass and what have you. But if the benefit of that is more for the benefit of the school and the kids, let's approach the school to have them spend the money for it. If they're going to get the lion's share of the benefit, I would throw that out for discussion.
I'd probably throw that, our citizens, I think, are gonna get just as much use out of it, make it all summer without kids, and we're talking about $3,500 total. We're not talking major budget items here. It sounds great to have it green and playable. I think there's plenty of soccer teams out there that would probably love to just go do an impromptu practice out there or something like that. So it would be playable, wonderful, I'd say, irrigate. Are we sure that the school district is okay with paying, with putting the water bill, that we're hooking up with them, is one question, and then another one is, with temporary sprinkler solutions, dragging hoses and those things, is that a tripping hazard? I mean, I just don't know that.
It is, so if we get water twice a week, most likely, in the evenings, after hours, and then hoses would get wrapped up.
Oh, actually, so they wouldn't just be sitting out there all day?
No.
Are we paying overtime for employees to go out and do the watering after hours?
No, no, 'cause we, we have crews that work late into the evening, and we'll have crews first thing in the morning, so, you know. We schedule our crews from early morning hours till late at night in the summertime.
I, I just wanna reiterate, is that if there's a start to something, where's the end? I'm uncomfortable if this thing takes on a life of its own, okay? It's, to me, it started out as a simple fix that I support, and now it's evolved into this, which I'm not totally against, but is it just trip our toe to the next? That's my concern, Chris.
So I don't, I don't have any problem spending extra $1,000 to make it a little more playable for the kids, and besides, you don't need council approval for $3,500.
I don't really have a problem with the 2,500, $3,500, that's really not a major budget item as far as I'm concerned. But there are other things that are concerning mine, you know. One is, one of our basic needs is we don't have equipment storage in, in the city. And I don't wanna spend 300 or 400,000 dollars for property, so we have equipment storage, but we already own property, we can store equipment there. So there are a lot of other options, and I'd just like to wait and see how those, those other options develop before we make a commitment overall to the, to the playfield.
Yeah, I don't think that, to, to address what you were saying, Mike, we, we can control how far this thing goes, right? You know, and I, and I wanna point out, as Chris did, I appreciate the fact that the staff is even talking to us about this, 'cause technically, you guys could do it, and we can't say squat about it. It's, it's in that price mark, so I appreciate you guys even talking to us about it and bringing us options, which is great, because we've really, it shows how well we've progressed as an organization. I think that we are truly lacking in fields of play as a whole. We don't, I know the baseball fields are capped out to the max, they're booked, and we don't have a lot of soccer areas or frisbee areas, things to that effect, lacrosse. So I'd be in support of looking at that 3,500 dollar option, just to get it going in the right direction. Not saying that we're gonna do anything major in the future, but to have some grass down there and make it look nice. We own that property now, I've, I've owned it for quite a while, and it's just been sitting there dirt. And I get tired of looking at it, and I know most people that live in the neighborhood get tired of looking at it. I think it's time for us to clean it up a bit. It's not a ton of money.
And to clarify, on my, my behalf, the, the only difference is, put native seed down, it's gonna grow off Mother Nature's spring rains, and it's gonna turn brown in the fall, we'll blow it once or twice to keep it down to a lower height, but it won't really be usable. If people wanna go in a dark field, I guess it can.
It kinda looks crappy. It's like, it's like the, the stuff, the stuff out in the backyard of our yard, the native grasses just looks crappy, you know, looks like one step above weeds.
A lot of people look at it and think it's weeds, and it's not weeds, but, or the option is for a little bit more. We could just, while we're in there, throw a different seed down, put a little water on top of it on a regular basis, blow it on a regular basis, and there you go.
Jen, how's talk, you know?
That's a addition to the 3,500.
No, no.
Jen, when you're talking about, about watering, and you're talking about putting hoses on the top and so forth, what's the difference between that, cost-wise, I guess, and putting some PVC-type sprinkler heads, you know, the, you know, kinda?
The hoses, we have a hose rail cart, they're gonna wind, we'll be able to wind them up on our hose rail cart versus PVC, which is sticks.
No, but I'm just saying, burying a PVC sprinkler system with the lawn, like they have at the golf course, they have the great.
Yeah, there's more, there's more of a design cost associated with that, it's a little more complicated because it is more permanent, we have a lot more flexibility with the moles, yeah, which we use down on our golf course, too.
If we have a fence there, how do we control the usage and permitting people to use, use that facility then? As we have grass down, it's mowed, it's watered. Well, they have access to it.
Yeah, there's a walking gate.
There's a walk-through access to it.
There's a walk.
It's just fenced out there, so it's, okay.
There's a walk-in gate that's always open, it's a, we'll walk in gate.
So if somebody wants to play soccer, or somebody wants to play something else there, how do you control that, who uses it, when they use it? Just saying what we do in our parks, I mean, if you want to play in the park, there's, there, there's gentleman's agreements, I guess, amongst people playing in the park.
We have, you know, if somebody wanted to reserve it, we go through the reservation process and issue a confirmation for it and.
It's really no different than for the park, if they wanna use it for soccer or anything else, or rugby.
We hadn't gotten that far along, as far as what we do, as far as reserving it, or leaving it just in open, very liquid, we do first couple of seasons, yeah, between them.
It sounds to me like we're, we're committing to it being a playfield. We're going to go through that whole process, and it's gonna be a playfield controlled by the city and approved by the city. And I don't think that the city council has voted to do that. Well, it's our property, we're gonna clean it up, I guess, and so that's the next, next step. But it's just made a follow-up to me, I mean, I know when I was in school, back in the day, we played on dirt, so having grass isn't much of an opportunity.
Was that football weight?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if, you know, and I agree, if somebody said that our citizens would be using it too, the only ones I've seen using it so far is people to let their dogs play in it. But other than that, it's school kids, okay? Why can't we just give the property back to them, say, there you go? What's wrong with that? That way, we don't have to have any expense to it, and it's being serviced by the people who're gonna use it.
I, I need to tell the people that we gave up three acres of property we have the opportunity to provide for our community, that's, I give it.
Well, that was somebody else making the guarantee on behalf of the city that the city didn't make. So I think now we'd have the opportunity for the city council to say, do we want the property or not?
Well, again, that's your choice.
And this wasn't, this conversation was meant to be brought up for conversation, to see what people's thoughts are about for decision, I just wanna clarify that.
Yeah, doesn't mean you can't make a decision.
I'm already on record several times tonight that I support that we do something there, but I heard something a little bit ago that concerns me, and that was that, well, you can spend up to $5,000, and we have no say-so. So my concern is, let's see, we do the grass and irrigation, the lawns under $5,000, we don't need permission. And then let's see, if we look at putting plexic, or plastic underneath the ground, if we can do that for less than $5,000, that means you probably have permission to do that, and we wouldn't have a say-so, and it just kinda balls from there. So I think we have to put a period in one of these sentences. You know, if it takes a motion, and we move ahead, if council supports that, I would certainly make the motion that we do do something with that land, and we put some grass seed there, if it does go take some irrigation, if it's, and the word temporary bothers me, but to move ahead on it, I'd rather see something there than just dirt.
And just to clarify, you, you can't piecemeal projects to add more money to it? It's $5,000 total per project, per project, period. So for that entire property, nothing more than that without city council vote to be done.
Hey Jen, I'm trying to remember some of these things, but if we did nothing with the property, then we're gonna have to do some sort of weed control, dust control anyways, right? So let's say, we did absolutely nothing, we just left it there, and we had to go out and like spray it for all kinds of weeds, and probably a lot of trucks come in for dust control, I assume, and some, what would that cost?
I'd have to watch the numbers.
I'm betting more than 2,500 bucks.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd probably be pretty equivalent if, if it is.
And we're gonna keep on doing it over time, so, I mean, so it seems to me that, one way or the other, we gotta do something there, just to do, weed control and dust control only, we're probably gonna make $1,000 bucks to make it playable, and I'd go, man, it seems like a valuable piece of property to keep in city control. If we wanna make it true turf fields later, we can do that, for now, just a green space, so, 3,500 bucks.
Can you explain to me, Hugh, why that's a valuable piece of city property?
Yeah, because we, the city lacks programmable field space?
Uh, I beg to differ with, if you look at our parks plan and our green space plan, we are well over the complete build-out level of service in parks, right? So when you start saying we don't have, it's kind of like, oh yeah, we do, okay? It's just a matter of using them, okay? So I'm still waiting for somebody to tell me why that's such a valuable piece of property sitting there. We've never owned it before, we seem to have done just fine with, with playable fields. So now, all of a sudden, we don't have enough playable fields. Why don't we have enough playable fields before we owned it, and we don't now that we do own it? And why is it so important to the city not just to turn around and say, here, we're gonna give you back control of your property, because you use it? What a novel idea. What's wrong with that?
We do have an issue with playable fields. I've witnessed it firsthand, all summer long, and all fall long, and all spring long. When I'm fighting with other groups to get some field space to play soccer and baseball and football, and they're all jammed in there at Pavilion Park.
Our responsibility is not to go out and find out how many teams are out there that are not from Liberty Lake, by the way, okay, that play at the baseball field, and go out and say, okay, we're gonna build more fields for you people to have a place to play, even though you're nothing to do with Liberty Lake, all right? No, that's not, what are we doing that for? We have fields, it's for our citizens, let them use it, okay? If there's not enough fields, don't play, go someplace else, okay? We can't just keep building because somebody wants a new field. That just doesn't make good sense to me, and I'm just trying to understand it. Yeah, I don't like the idea, but above and beyond that, just tell me how it makes good sense. And, you know, I can get on board with this, to a point.
Well, to clarify, the baseball players are from Liberty Lake.
Okay.
They join teams with the Valley and Liberty Lake to expand a little league baseball, so there are plenty of people from Liberty Lake that play on those baseball fields.
So why is it important for that piece of field to belong to the city? Are you telling me it wouldn't be available if it belonged to the, to the school? You're telling me it's not available, just like the other school there's, the Liberty Lake Elementary Fields?
But if the school owns it.
They're available.
So we can go out and make, make a pile of weeds and we can't do anything about it?
They're available.
We're talking about 3,500 bucks to make it playable?
It could be a nuclear disaster, too, okay? A lot of things could be if.
Well, it was. I mean, for 20 years.
But my question is, is why is that, all of a sudden, such a valuable piece of real estate that we have to get onto the people and tell them that they're now gonna support it?
Well, I'll tell you, the issue was, it was 20 acres out there, it stood as weeds for about 20-some years, but the school district redoted for that 20 years. They never cleaned it up, they never cut down the weeds, really. And so then, we made an offer, opportunity of an offer to, to put the entire field, 20 acres underneath city control. And at that time, the council decided they're gonna spend about a million and a half dollars in building two baseball fields, which we did, and beautified that. And then the school.
Which they were supposed to buy back, by the way, which never happened, but.
Well, they didn't, but we didn't.
They just know they never bought it back, and they didn't pay for the improvement.
They said if they wanted the property back, we would, they would pay them, pay them $7 or $10.
There was nothing said about if they want it.
Yes, it was.
No, it wasn't, Mayor, but go ahead.
Okay, well, I am, and.
Get to it then.
Quite frankly, you know, you're looking at, we're cleaning up the neighborhood, the weeds in the neighborhood, and providing for a basis of some kind of weed control or beautification for that three acres, until, you know, you decide whether you wanna do something different there or not. Or if, if somebody else comes back and says, hey, we should like to, the school district could come back and say, we should like to build something there with more storage from another school or play ground.
We can have that decision now.
You can.
Do something else with it, like give it back to them.
Well.
Why is it important for us to keep picking up the slack and doing all this beautification?
You guys give it back, I bought it, you give it back.
Yeah, that's the problem, I.
No, it's not the problem. Wouldn't?
No, it's not for you.
Okay, I don't think you need to, you need to break into personal.
Earlier, I made a motion, is that not necessary in this case, Shane, or Sean? I was, I was just clarifying a tip.
I mean, you said you were going to make a motion, I don't know that you actually made one, which?
Oh, in my mind, I did.
Plus, I'd like to point out, is the land was bought by the approval in the vote of the city council. That's who bought that land, that's who authorized the money, was the city council. Authorized, is the only ones who has the vote, the authority to buy the land. I thought I did make an motion. Do you want me to make another motion?
Would you make a motion, please?
I don't know. Well, let me see if I can jump in the middle of this again. I would make a motion for clarification for the city council to move ahead, with doing something with that land, putting some grass in it, with trees, something, get some grass in it, get some water on it. on it.
Is that the 3,500 dollar option?
The third 500 dollar option. Are we still under 5,000?
No.
3,500 dollar option. Oh, 35, I'm sorry. I thought you said the third.
Not 35,000.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll second that.
Second. Come for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
All opposed? No.
No. 42.
Can I, can I add just a comment? So this is not meant to be a long-term solution, this is an interim solution. I want that to be in the record, so I'm looking at our city clerk. This is a methodology to maintain the three plus acres, 3,500 dollars, and it's not a permanent solution. And the other thing I want to mention is that our equipment is up there anyway because the school district, we house our equipment in the school district's property. So the equipment's already up there, we won't be storing equipment outside.
I'd just like to point out that we were just given the responsibility to prioritize all of the projects for the city. And we've just made this the number one priority of the city by voting to do something with it.
It's not a priority.
This is not a priority.
It's on the list, it's on the list, look at your list.
It's on the list for the number one project.
It's not become one priority because we took, we have a motion and we may take an action to make this a number one priority and do this first before we do anything else in the city.
Thanks.
I think that's inappropriate.
Okay.
Jan is done.
I'm done.
She's like, I wanted to be done five minutes ago. She's going to stink out the door now.
Done for mom, I'm just.
Sorry to put you into the fire there. Hey, welcome back, Andrew.
How's it going, Dad?
Hey, Dad.
Congratulations.
Did you take pictures?
We want to see pics.
You know, we survived, we didn't get sick, not much.
Get put in jail or anything?
No.
Okay.
Get a lot of strange things, some things that I couldn't identify. A lot of crowded subways.
Thank you for coming in, while you're still off, by the way.
Sure. All right. So I'm going to go ahead and hand these out.
Yeah, okay. Good. So this is our virtual park.
It is, and I have a coffee for you. Oh, I've got an extra second.
It's a lovely.
You don't need it.
I can't even write on black anyway. All right. So a few weeks, excuse me, I get into kind of a nasty cold, so if I have to stop and cough, which is like, hold cough in your directional. All right, so a few weeks ago, we had a bid opening for our virtual park. Originally, the landscape architect had put a estimate together for the construction cost of about 1.5 to 2.5 million, depending on what options were selected, how many alternates we went after. I put together a lot of alternate lists, so at least beginning, we were trying to assure ourselves that we would stay inside of our budget. However, once we opened it, the base bid, just the base bid, taking all the alternates and the list out, was about 2.34 million dollars. That is about 39% over what the architect had estimated, the base bid. That is very unusual, it does not happen often, but in this case, it did. So as of right now, that's where this sits. The low bidder, Bacon Concrete, good company, not a company that I have, I have extensive history with them, we've got a lot of things. They put together solid numbers, so I have company, I have no questions about their work, you know, their numbers that they've provided us. For this evening, really have a couple of options. We could decide tonight to build nothing and just say, you know what, we're going to put the brakes on this. This number was higher than what we expected, we're not comfortable with this, we're not going to move forward right now. That's one option. The other would be to, right now, initiate a redesign of the project. Take out elements that are inside the park and further cut back and come back with something that is within the budget the council has already established. The last option is to move forward with awarding a project, which you're not moving forward awarding tonight. That is going to be on the April council if you decide to have something on that agenda for award or not. So right now, the total budget increase, now, keep in mind, originally, we were looking at RCO funds, having those, we know that that has not been materialized, we're not getting those. So right now, the city dollars that have been allocated to this project are about 2.164 million dollars, 2,164,000. The delta in getting us a good park project is approximately 860,000 dollars from what we had originally budgeted to get us a base working park. That does give us the full-size restroom because we would be, and the concession stand, because putting those in after the fact would be very destructive to the park. There's some things that you can do afterwards with, I'm not going to say minimal impact, but less impact to your existing park facility that you just constructed. Those two items, the concession stand and the extra restroom section, would cost a lot of money after the fact and would be definitely good to go ahead and do that now. So with that, the total budget would move up to 3.03 million dollars. That's what it would take to build that park. So I guess with that.
Could I, Andrew, because not every council member is familiar with the base bid, it'd probably be good to tell them what the parking lot, the splash pad.
Just to give you an overview, we've got an 11.2 acre park, two separate parking lots, one at the north end and south end. We have a lot of vegetation in the park, we have sport courts, so basketball.
But that, is that included in the base bid?
No.
Okay, so talk about what the base bid.
Yeah, your base bid is going to include the northern parking lot, the splash pad, nearly all the concrete flat work, so you're not coming in after the fact and tearing up your irrigation system that you're going to put in. And it's going to include half of the plantings, which will still provide a very well-planted park. Plantings are something that we can come back and do after the fact through volunteer projects, Boy Scouts and other things, volunteers. So you're getting a, and your restrooms, your restrooms are complete at that point. So you're getting a complete park. No one is going to come up to this park and think, oh, this was half-built. It is going to look good and be very perfectly functional. There's things that we would need to do after the fact if you wanted to bring it to the same standards as Pavilion, you know, with having a covered Pavilion shelter and other things, but you are going to have a fully functional and usable park.
No playground equipment?
You do get playground equipment, you do.
You do, you do get playground equipment?
Yes.
Correct.
Not all of it, but you do get playground equipment.
Which would be what?
That's swings, you're getting some slides, some equipment for the young children. Yeah, you're getting all kinds of concrete pathways for someone riding their bikes and their tricycles.
And what's the base price?
What's that?
Base price?
Uh, we're going to be looking at 3.03 million.
For the base? So what you just described.
That is 3.03 million.
And that's without?
That's without the southern parking lot, Pavilion Shelter, there's a, there's a longer list of things that are.
So just to put, as I believe your words, putting something that nobody would think was half-done, is 3 million?
Yes.
So if I could clarify, Andrew, so the 3 million, 3.03, which is what's on the sheet that he headed out, so the base bid is 2.3, then we have to buy the restroom, it's a prefab, then we have soft costs, we have connection, water sewer, connection charges in a vista, so that adds, that's the 863,000, is that correct, Andrew?
Uh, yes, that's making sure we've purchased our restrooms and all the soft costs that happened during construction contingency.
And then about another, how much if we go through the whole design?
Right. If you were to go through, like, funding everything?
Yeah.
You would be adding another probably 1.2 million dollars onto that?
Onto 3, so we're going to 4.3 million dollars approximately for this whole thing?
If you were to fund the entire alternate list.
And if we redesigned, so you mentioned the option of redesigning, what kind of costs are we, I mean, I know that's kind of swag, what kind of costs are we?
That's, that's something I would have to come back and have discussion on.
Oden had brought up a good question, the last time we discussed this, one, how long is the bidding process open? Two, what are your thoughts on if we put it out there to rebid and open it up a little bit more for some other organizations to come in?
Uh, bidding process was open for, I'm going off my memory here, I believe it was about three weeks. Anytime we do a bid process, we make sure, I call contractors, I describe the project to them, we go through a discussion, do you think with this type of project, this scope, this, these types of items, is to add, I'm going to tell them to provide estimates, accurate estimates? And all of them said yes. The consistency of the numbers that are provided by the contractors also affirm that. If you had added big trees, you would expect to see a huge variation in the numbers.
Andrew, we got two bids?
Two responsive bids.
And Wincor and Bacon, both local contractors, both bid, Bacon was low, but they weren't that far apart. So the, if you were going to rebid, the advantage to rebid is to attract more bidders and we're getting later in the season, so I'd be concerned.
Your prices are going to.
The prices are going to go up and I don't know that we're going to get more bidders, but that's always an option. But it's, you don't know for sure, but the bids were pretty close, 2.3 and 2.5 something, they were in the same ballpark.
What do you propose the source of the additional funds is going to be?
So I had talked with this, about this with RJ. He had proposed using REIT, REIT dollars. The project is also, and that is strictly to get us through the cash.
Cash flow, yeah.
The REIT dollars would be used to initially pay for the park. It is TIFLIF reimbursable, and so after we have paid for the park, paid the contractor, we would go to the county and seek reimbursement for those funds.
So I did get a information from RJ, I'll pass it around, did you guys get copies of this or not? So basically, our REIT right now is at 2.2 million dollars through March. He thinks that by the end of this year, it will be at 2.6 million dollars. I'll pass this around and.
I have a copy.
Oh, you have a copy too? I don't care, yeah. So he thinks that REIT will more than cover, will cover the 3 million dollars just because of the, we don't, won't spend all the money at once. And then we would seek, and then after you're done building the park and it's completed, then you go back to the county commissioners and ask for reimbursement and that usually takes about, can take six to eight months to get reimbursed after you've spent the money. And then REIT would be made whole.
Yeah.
It's a lot.
It is a lot. It is a lot.
It really is.
Pointing fingers, basis rules.
I want to address the ever-present elephant. If we're working on capital facilities at this point, you know, it should, because we're talking about REIT, if we're going to tap into 100% of the REIT, take us six, eight months to get that back in, is this something that we slow down on? We should discuss that, is this something we slow down on until we look at capital facilities and what are the priorities? Where's the money coming from for the things we feel are priorities? Is this at the top of the list or near the list? It is disappointing, you see 863,000 dollars, but it is what it is. I'm going to throw that out.
Yes, I've always supported this project from the beginning, I think you all know that. I think it's a very good project, I think it's a very needed project. Again, I think that we have to consider what we're going to do in the context of our overall strategic plan, for the short term and the long term. And again, if we just look at this by itself, then we're in effect prioritizing it. I'm not adverse to having a redesign and looking at it again from another perspective. You know, I, that's a, that's a lot of money, I think, for us to come up with and absorb. I'd like to look and see if there's a different design that might work well for the community and that still might give us the park.
I guess I would rather. So the design that was bid was the one that the board is showing. So at least in my mind, the community is expecting what they want to be shown, but that's just for your consideration.
The comment I was going to make is it's really not just an 863,000 dollar increase, we're looking at 2.5 originally, 500,000 coming from grant money, but we're really now looking at 4.3 if we want to do.
Well, if you do, you're correct, if you did the entire park.
So I think we need to consider that.
Yeah, probably 40% or 45% increase.
Yeah, well, so just the base was 39% over.
Correct.
Tonight, don't we have to approve a engineering on that?
That was, the engineering, the engineering was for the trailhead irrigation system.
There's not one for, there's Orchard Park too?
Correct, there is not. And what we're kind of looking for tonight is to know what the council wants us to bring back on April 3rd, if you want us to bring back anything. Doesn't have to be April 3rd, but I know the contractor has a bond sitting out there waiting for an action. We did open the bids at the end of February, so it's been about four weeks since we've opened the bids and I think the community and the contractor both are hoping to, for a decision.
I'll go out there that it's tough that I came back about bid. It seems to me that redesign, we may be able to cut things out, but I don't, I think that I wouldn't be worried about getting an incomplete park. And so I tend to feel like it is what it is. Doesn't mean we have to move forward with it now, but it's a good project. Cost of construction just tend to go up. And it seems like, gosh, Andrew, I really appreciate you looking at it from a standpoint of what makes good sense to do now versus what could be added on efficiently later on. So it seems to me to be a good idea to award the base bid, or move forward with that. I think a redesign just pushes us out to another year, and all we're gonna do is more money, and, uh, so it seems like, well, it's a tough pill to swallow, but go on, award base bid, get the project done, we can think about those add alternates later. At least we're giving the community what they've been shown. A great project for the city.
Andrew, with the, uh, one parking lot, how many stalls are we looking at, or better yet, how comparable is it to a parking lot pavilion?
How many stalls do we?
Talking half size, the same size for one parking lot? They're just a ballpark.
I wanna say it's, um, I think somewhere around 40 stalls.
Well, we'll find out.
The reason I ask is, can we get away with one parking lot, you know, pavilion parking, one parking lot? If it's common, one size, that can be sufficient. I know it's always full, but just in consideration, it's better than nothing.
And I would say, for the time being, because the neighborhood is not built out, we are going to have on-street parking along Harvest Parkway. The parking is going to be adequate for a number of years. By the time we hit build out, that second parking lot will be absolutely necessary.
Yeah, I can imagine.
Harvest Parkway's not even in yet, is it?
Yeah, it's gonna be constructed this year, almost in tandem with the park.
And we know this because they just said so, right?
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the construction schedule. We've been, I've been meeting with Greystone regularly.
Okay, so you see some action on that?
What's that?
Do you see action on that, on the road?
Yeah, they're scheduling their crews and.
Let me just say this. Good projects come and go, and I beg to differ with councilmen, that, you know, it's a pill and you just swallow and go. No, the real deal is you take a stand and you do what's right for the whole community, and you say, no. But that being said, I want everybody to realize that you are moving in a fast lane to get rid of your REIT funds, which means any other of your capital projects are going to suffer for at least 18 months. And although I don't think it's ever happened, I want you to be fully aware that we have to go hand, I mean, hand to the county and ask them to approve this to give us our money back. Okay, nobody says they, they're gonna agree. We've had a great relationship so far, so I don't see any reason for that not to, not to continue. But we've just said no to everything else, if this plan progresses, for 18 months or more. And it's gonna take that long to construct. Thank you.
I guess we're, just let me throw, I, I believe confidently that construction costs are not going down, and that it's in the city's interest to advance a project to the scope and scale, I, I'm gonna say as available and as able. I believe confidently in the ability of the county to reimburse based on TIP and LIFT, so I don't think there's any uncertainty regarding that transaction. I'm, I'm recognizing and supporting the project in the current form. Thanks for the work on the bids.
I think it's a cash flow deal. It's a cash flow analysis that RJ said, he said, I wanna just target my REIT funds, utilize that cash to build this park. That's not necessarily the only cash that he could choose to use, it is one that's eligible for us. Second thing is, is that we look down the road and we start to, this is a piece of our strategic plan, or it's been kind of a priority or a move forward for the last couple of years. Otherwise, we wouldn't spend the money to design it. And again, we should award the contract, I would look at the contract as almost like a design build from the standpoint of, you know, here's the money that we have, this is what you bid on, we're gonna take this out, put this in, so we get what we need done for the interim three or four years, five years. You know, I don't necessarily think we should be constrained by the cash, constrained by the cash. Because, again, if you look at, maybe if this is the project, we're saying this, this park project is $2 million, when we get to a $2 million completion dollar, I forget somewhere that is, then you make that as to, to lift. You know, here's our invoice, you know, you have to, you have to put it in the road, this is a road, but you'll have to do all the landscaping around the road, right? But you can get your road like, your lift money for a phone station like that. So I think, really, I think between now and when we go to award this contract.
We're looking at April 3rd, if that's the direction we're going.
I would ask RJ to come up with a very solid cash flow plan.
So he has, he has brought it up, he's, yeah, he's brought it up.
I see this here, I'm just saying, more, more into, uh, this is the balance how you're gonna use the cash. This is not a cash flow plan in my head.
Okay.
This is, you know, when is that invoice gonna come to us? When are we gonna pay it? And that's cash flow to me, I don't know about anybody else, but. And so I, I would suggest RJ come back and say, this is how we're gonna get our invoices paid, this is how we're gonna approach the calendar and the lift money with our invoice. With this, you know, half a park is a half a park, you know, you're not just, oh, you have to build a whole park.
I think RJ said in the last meeting, and unfortunately he's not here to confirm, that the project had to be complete before we get, you know, applied.
Before we can. But it's what you call your project, that's the issue. If we're sitting there saying, you know, if, if lift is only gonna fund the parking lot, when that's a parking lot is laid, you don't have to have any trees around, the lift is gonna pay for the parking lot. So it's what you call your project. And again, between now and the 3rd, these are the things that we'll pull out to come back. This is a cash flow, this is how we're gonna spend our money, take the money out of general fund money, out of REIT money, whatever gets these things done, we're gonna make, complete these invoices and turn those over to county, and this is how they're gonna send us our money back. It's not necessarily, it may have been in the past an eight-month plan, but sometimes we haven't really made demands as a city. Developers are different handling, handling the city. And so it may be a quarter turnaround around eight months, you have your money back in 30 days.
Yeah, you have to close out the project, and the mayor's right, however you define the project, the project has to be closed out and completed. Using the park as we know, by the time you grade seed to grow in, you know, Jen, it could be 18 months before anyone is actually out kicking a ball and running around.
We could, we could make that.
But we have to close out the project, submit for reimbursement.
Those hard case deals.
The park itself would be considered closed out as far as reimbursement is concerned.
Before it's.
By the end of season.
Yeah.
Once that construction.
So we'll work on a cash flow, so kind of what I'm hearing, and I'm sorry, Councilmember Kennedy, his head is on up.
No, 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 no.
So what I'm hearing is, and I, I know we have a lot, about 15, 20 more minutes, but what I'm hearing, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, is to bring back a base project and a budget amendment, perhaps, and then a cash flow scenario, so the council can see before they award the bid, the money's in and the money's out, or the money's out, and then how long it's gonna take for the money to come back in. That's kind of what I'm hearing.
Yeah. I'm looking at REIT here, and I'm only gonna read as, as a pie right now. And it's 2.6 million dollars from 2018, if I'm reading this correctly. I'm also looking over here at our capital facilities, and item number 10 is trailhead driving range, which we have to do something with that, and one that we've already voted on is spend 1.3 million dollars on trailhead valve course irrigation. Now I look over where it's gonna be paid from, it comes from REIT and general fund. So how many times can we cut this pie? If we have 2.6 million dollars from 2018, and if we're gonna take 2. some odd million dollars of that for the park, you wanna tell me how I'm gonna, help me understand how I'm gonna pay for the 1.3 million irrigation? It brings you right back.
Because it's already in the budget, it's already in the budget. It's already, yeah, we need RJ, but we'll, that's, yes, you can't spend the same dollar twice.
Right, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Plus, just, if I can finish, plus, I can't get super motivated on theory, well, it's gonna cost, the construction costs are gonna go up. They're always gonna go up.
Yeah.
I'd like to buy a new car this year, but I can't buy it based on I'm gonna buy it this year, because next year's gonna be more expensive. Can I afford it this year? So we gotta, we gotta pie here up. I think we should have to continue to focus on our capital facilities. Where, how big is this pie? How far are we gonna cut it up on what? Any other comments? Paul?
I'd just like to say, you know, again, I wish we could finish our priority list of our capital facilities plan. And I don't think we can take these things individually, we're taking another one right now and saying, okay, we're giving this a priority. Even though this was my number one priority under the park section, the Orchard Park. I don't know what yours were, but that was my number one priority, so I very much wanted to have it. But I still think we, we have to work on our capital facilities plan and our strategic plan in order to say, how does this fit in? All of them aren't gonna fit. Some are gonna have to be delayed. I don't know whether this is one of them or not. I think we have to make, that's a decision we have to make. And I don't think that we're in a position to make that decision tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Um, so just a quick update on a couple of things. One is the capital facilities plan that Councilmember Moore just mentioned. Tate put it together like this, so I printed copies for you, because everything I saw was like this and I couldn't read it. So if you want to, um, just mark that up, put your name on it and send it back, then RJ will look at tabulating what your number one priorities are. For me, it was just, when you get my agent, the print's a little bit bigger so I could read it, so.
Do you still have the bottom here where you can put some judicial comments?
Absolutely, and the backside as well. Do you wanna add, delete? Yes.
Looks like this is, this is the exact same thing RJ.
It's the exact same thing, it's just reformatted. So you can read it.
And space at the bottom where you can put additions and comments.
So going back to what we're gonna talk about a week from tonight on March 27th, is we were going to take everybody's priorities and tabulate them and bring that back for discussion. So if we could have it by Friday, that would give RJ time to get all that put together. The other thing I was gonna mention is staffing task orders, so today on the agenda is a task order with parametrics for planning services. Frank Ives has done a great job helping us last week, this week, so I need to get that task order approved, so if you have any questions?
Um, so it didn't seem like an estimated total timeframe match sort of thing.
Yeah, so you're right, we don't have that, so it's an hourly rate. He's been working Tuesdays and Wednesdays, so he worked today, he works tomorrow. And then if there's something urgent, or someone comes in the door and needs a planning interpretation, we pick up the phone or we email him, and he tries to do it, he's working a little bit on weekends and those kinds of things. So we didn't put a cap on it, but he's only working about, I'd say, 16 to 20 hours a week. I will say that we're, kind of the volume of activities are kind of challenging for us right now.
Which do you?
Pardon me?
Oh, I was gonna say, I guess my question is, how mu, if he's only working those certain number, approximate hours each week, how does that cost compared to what Amanda's salary benefits were costing us?
So it's higher, it's higher than her hourly rate, so let me do some quick arithmetic. Real quick here. Because she had benefits as well. I had this conversation with RJ, and I, I know that Frank's hourly rate is more than Amanda's salary plus benefits, so let me just do it quick. So probably about $600 a week.
Or more, even though he's only working half the hours?
How much an hour?
So the rate for a planner with parametrics in the task order is $140 an hour.
Kate, could you give us an update anywhere where we are of applications being sent out?
So, yes, so let me talk about that. There's a personnel situation that we're gonna amend today's agenda, so I can give you some qualifications for you to consider in closed session tonight.
Thank you.
Okay? So what I'm thinking is this in three steps. First step was stop the bleeding, which means get someone here that can handle the intake, and the questions and phone calls that we're getting related to planning. That was parametrics and/or Frank Ives that helped us do that. I think, see, the next stage is really, and I had a conversation with a bunch of planners and other city administrators, especially with those in small town, because I wanna understand how they're organized and all that. So I think I should probably figure, we should probably figure on a three to six month transition period, and if I could hire someone to help me with that transition period that is more full-time and more affordable, then I could go to a full-time, a full-fledged recruitment. That's kind of what I'm thinking. So parametrics helped us with an immediate need. I have an interim plan that I'll cover with you in closed session, and then after that, I'll be going through a, a full-fledged recruitment, probably, and I would say three to six months, so.
So for the trailhead, we're $101,000 for the design, is that what that's for?
Correct, so that's on the agenda for today. So Andrew wasn't here when we had the workshop a week ago, so they did decide they wanted to move forward with the parametrics and the other professional services to complete the design, so we can go to bid on the trailhead irrigation. So that's on your agenda for tonight, $101,000 for that. Which I believe is in the budget, it was, that's a budgeted, it's already factored into our budget. So no, I talked about this, CFP, I've talked about the transition and then the staffing task order, but that's pretty much it.
Anything else from the council, or any comments?
I, I throw a good one, um, kind of public service. You and me, the electric car guy. I signed up this week for Washington State's road usage charge pilot meeting. For those who are not into this yet, the good news is the gas tax is going away. And I'll say very clearly, the state of Washington, Washington is planning on eventual extinguishment of the gasoline tax, because honestly, you're not gonna be using gasoline. So the state of Washington is evaluating how to bill per mile for residents of the state of Washington for using the roads. So part of this pilot program then is to shake out, debug, figure it out, see how people game the system about how to report the miles that you drive in a car in the state of Washington. So there are five methods and technology to deploy this, right? The first one, a book of vouchers, we'll call it, a simple kind of like set of coupons that, you know, this book's as good for 10,000 miles. And you'll be asked to surrender those vouchers on a certain period. That sounded kind of goofy. Uh, the second method is using their app, you take a picture of your odometer. On a period, this app wakes up and says, hey, go take a picture of your odometer. And this is a method to report miles driven in the state of Washington, but how does that, well, I drive to Iowa all the time. So the third method then is a small dongle apparatus kind of little thing. It fits to the OBD 2 port of your '96 and later model car, and communicates with engine management, just taking off the miles that are accumulated. Uh, and that thing sits there and talks with the app on the phone to be able to report the miles that are being accumulated on the car. And there's two flavors of that. Now, there's one flavor that just rolls the miles, and a second flavor that has an embedded GPS. And the embedded GPS is there with only the determination that you are or you are not in the state of Washington. So that way, it upwardly reports through the app to the state that, yeah, here's the number of miles that you roll off. So it's kind of an interesting concept, the whole thing is outfitted and ready, and I'm looking at a handheld with mock invoices for the number of miles that I've driven. So the participants in the pilot are not just guys driving around electric cars, but. but also gasoline cars. And it'll be very clear that in this case, it offers you a direct comparison of the expense that you have paid directly in Washington State gasoline taxes compared to what you would be assessed for road uses charges under the alternate model. So, to be very, very clear, your 16-mile-per-gallon Tundra would cost you a lot less if you were not paying gasoline taxes and paying road use charges instead. You're purchasing more gasoline. So, there's really interesting kind of observations that are shaken out of this. And, yeah, the state's just out there trying to figure out what this is and how it works and how they're going to somehow manage to keep our roads in operation as the revenue from gasoline taxes steadily decrease, so...
So, I actually installed the device. I'm on the pilot also. And wherever I go, there's this little blinking green light. It's tracking me. And according to the first week, I would pay more in road usage than I would in gas tax.
Exactly.
So, it's, it's tracking me.
So, that just depends then on that fuel consumption.
Or will the government track us?
Yeah.
Exactly.
It'll always be tracked. Yeah.
So, just the last one there, Kate, is the, the whole thing is operated by a...
It's kind of creepy. My granddaddy goes, where's that light?
Um, I was just gonna observe, the whole thing's operated by a service provider, contract operator to the state, a company named Trixie. Anyway, they are already, I'd say, deployed for a lot of over-the-road vehicles, say, long-haul trucking kind of activity. So, this is simply an extension of what is already in practice regarding mileage accumulation for a lot of business reasons. So, yeah, so it's just kind of extending the technology into consumer activity. Okay? Thank you.
All right? Are you ready?
Merciful Father, we're grateful for this opportunity to come together to speak of and to reflect on this place we call home. Inspire in us imagination and wisdom to listen and to act. Amen.
Let the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to the agenda with one modification to add a personnel discussion to the executive session.
Second is amended.
Yes, also amended the citizen comments to the executive session.
Was there this question? As of end of the day, Mr. Renai?
Aye.
Citizen comments, here we are. Wow, that's amazing. This thing is gonna slip by. You guys are gonna leave this. Okay, so we're gonna go on to our reports. City Board and Commission reports. So, I see our library ones here.
We're busy just over there, but I don't have reporters.
They're busy. I'm good.
Works.
Okay. That's a good thing. And a Plan Commission. You have a plan in place right here? No Plan Commission. Any other commissions, anything else?
I don't see any, so no. Oh, excuse me, Tom is here.
Well, I know, he's next.
Oh, he's next.
I have a special billing for you.
Oh, okay.
So, once we get to the City Boards and Commission, then we, the Liberty Lake Sewer and Water District, presentate.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council, city staff, fellow citizens. I also want everything to report except that today, I'm proud to announce that the district staff and I celebrated the 35th anniversary of the water reclamation plant chief operator, which, of course, 35 years is itself quite an accomplishment. This is someone that many in our business statewide refer to as among the best operators in the state. And he's quite a guy. He had brought a future at HSME. So, aside from graduation.
How's the new plant running?
Too early to tell. I mean, these things take even DOL, acknowledge is that it can be months or a year or two before they really can be optimized.
What are some of the, you know, we talked, we're talking about irrigation tonight, but what are some of the future plans for water reuse or that the district may have? I know you have a map of your purple pipe to some extent, but...
Well, the, I was surprised to learn that we are one of the few districts in the area, as a matter of fact, the only one, that actually has a reclaimed water documentation on file and accepted and ready to go with DOL. Unfortunately, that's about all that's ready to go with DOL. This is not as clear a path as you would think. And I can't speak to all of the challenges, but one that kind of helps us lay people understand it is that if you take water from a system, then you have to establish that taking that water does not impair the system, does not reduce the amount of water necessary, excuse me, for the system to operate. So, imagine, whether it's the city of Spokane or the county or Liberty Lake or Pulse Falls or Port Alene for that matter, if they stop discharging to the river, they are taking water in the regulator's minds out of the river. So, I mean, it's really a strange dilemma because what good is the opportunity to use reclaimed water and treating wastewater to a level of treatment that makes it eligible for reuse if in fact you're guilty of impairment? So, you can't actually take the water out of the river and reuse it on the ground? So, so they answer your question honestly, your honor, is it? I don't know.
Well, thank you, Ms. Raymuel. It's always a pleasure to have you come. Other public agencies, fire districts here. I know Patrick's here from the fire district. So, anything from you, Moore? Anybody else? Katie, it's your turn.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. It's my honor and pleasure to introduce the Youth Commission. There's some of folks here that you might recognize, some very young faces out there, and I'm gonna call their names and ask if they could sign, stand up. I'm only gonna pronounce first names because I noticed some of these last names are a little bit challenging for me. So, Chloe, Natalie, Savannah, Macy, Cooper, Sarah, and Garrett. So, let's continue. And then I'm gonna ask Chloe, if she'll come up and just say a few words. And while she's walking up, I also want to recognize Councilmember Dunn, who's volunteered to help them in their efforts. So, with that, I will ask Chloe to just say a few words about her group.
Hi, good evening. Um, so, I was really excited when RJ Stevenson emailed me and was like, and said, would you and Natalie like to meet with me and if we could talk about the opportunity of having a youth commission? And I was like, because I applied for it and I didn't really know if like, if I would get any feedback back or not. I was really happy when we met. And Natalie and I started discussing right away who we would want to work with us and what we would want to do. We are very excited, all seven of us, to support the youth in the community and give them more of an opportunity to have recu, recreational, recreational activities outside, that they can come to their friends and it can be a safe place where they can hang out and we can do sports or different things at the library or at Pavilion Park. And we are just really excited to get this going and have the youth be more involved in the community because I think as a youth member of the community, I feel that we don't, we have a lot to offer, but maybe people don't exactly know about the things. And we want to just advertise more and really get the youth more involved. Is there any questions? I'm looking forward to having you guys. Yes, we're very excited.
Thank you.
Very beautiful. Thank you.
Chloe's a freshman at Central Valley High School and you've lived here your entire life.
Yes, I have.
One thing that will give you is experience and do some projects and some leadership opportunities and give voice to youth into our communities, right? And I want to tell you, when we were over at Olympia a month ago, we went to Matt Shay's office and one of our previous youth commissioner people was his legate. And so, she had a job over there for the legislative sessions, so... It's a great opportunity to meet other people and move along with different things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, this item, you will be confirming the Youth Commission under your action items. And then Jen will also be introducing or talking about the Youth Commission for the Parks and Arts Commission.
Student Commission.
Student Commission, when we get to that part. So, I'm gonna keep going, just a quick wrap-up. So, March 13th, a week ago, I just wanted to mention for the record, because I know the public necessarily didn't read our minutes and know what was decided, but two things kind of went on at the meeting on March 13th. One is the council's gonna be prioritizing the capital facilities plan and we'll be discussing that on March 27th. But they also took a vote to stay in the golf course business. So, I just wanted to mention that for the record. And then finally, the last item on my report is when I was gone, RJ mentioned that there were some questions about the council configuration. And I want to share with you my thinking. This whole room is set up around that screen. And if the screen goes away, there's some things that we can do. And what I'm thinking of doing is more of a horseshoe so that all the council members can see each other. You don't have like one council member on the end and like the mayor pro temp can't see Mike and the mayor can't see Odin and that kind of stuff. So, if we do a U-shaped, well, just have to buy some new tables. And then we can look at the televisions or the monitors around the room a little bit differently than we did before. I'm not expecting that it's gonna be any more expensive, but I need to find out. The other thing is these wires that are holding us down right now, a lot of those will be gone. And so, we'll, we'll have more of a horseshoe here so that you guys will be centered more at this end of the room. And that's what we're thinking of. I've, I've been waiting until Andrew gets back so he could draw it up for me so I could bring it back to you in a future workshop. But he's been out of the office, so I haven't had a chance to get it drawn up yet. But my goal is to bring back to you a layout with chairs, tables, monitors so that you can look at it and we can talk about it at a future workshop. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Councilmember Kaminski's?
No, I was just trying, making some drawings. I was just wondering why...
Oh, she's designing.
Yeah. What I was just curious is to why new tables? Why we couldn't figure out a way to use the ones?
So, we possibly can. The challenge we, when I laid it out with chairs, so three across the front would be the city attorney, the mayor pro temp and the mayor, three on each side. The challenge I have with these tables, I think they're five footers. Two, it's, three is too crowded and two is, I don't have enough tables. So, I'm thinking I just need a six-foot table so I can fit three of you there. Does that make sense? Yeah. The tables we have, they're just too small for like two, like if you notice, Councilmember Dunn and Odin fit on one table. But if I need three on a leg, then I need two tables on a leg and it didn't work out as good. But I'll, I'll confirm the table size. Mayor, that concludes my report. I'm done.
There's smoke. Very good. All right, well, action item then.
Mayor, move number seven, General, one, two, to approve March 6, 2019, a worth of 13,000, City Council Minutes. And to per March 20, that's the amount of $233,675 in per cent.
Move in second for the discussion. I hear you all, move to say aye. Aye. There you go.
Mayor, move General, this is number one, to approve Task Authorization 2018-015 with parametrics to provide interim city planning services.
Second?
Second.
And second, discussion. I hear you all, move to say aye. Aye. There you go.
Mayor, move General, this is number two, to approve Task Authorization 2018-013, the amount of $101,620 for the parametrics for designing a tri-golf course irrigation system.
Second?
Move in second for the discussion. I hear you all, move to say aye. Aye. There it goes.
General, this is number three, to confirm appointments for Liberty Lake Youth Commission. Second?
Move in second for the discussion. I hear you all, move to say aye. Aye. There you go.
You guys are official.
Official now.
Congratulations. Mayor, move number four to authorize the purchase of a great laser line striper in the amount of $6,867. Second?
Move in second for the discussion. I hear you all, move to say aye.
Aye.
There you go. First read ordinance again.
Ordinance number 248, City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington. An ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, granting the right of franchise to MCI Metro Access Transmission Services for DBA Verizon Access Transmission Services for the operation of a telecommunications system in the City of Liberty Lake.
Kate, have they answered any of these questions, the viewer questions?
Yeah, there is one other question that's pending and I'm gonna let Sean answer that question. I think it's, we're getting really close. We had some email exchanges yesterday.
Yeah, we're pretty close. We figured five, next thing. Okay. So, now I need to...
Correct. This is the first read, but we plan to bring back a second read.
Perfect. Okay.
Ordinance number 245A.
Ordinance number 245A, City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington. An ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington, amending ordinance number 245 passed by the City Council on October 17, 2017, creating a Parks and Arts Commission, establishing duties thereof and repealing any ordinance in conflict.
So, quick question out there, is only the one change?
Yes, and Jen does have a few comments to make. So, I'm gonna invite Jen up and she's gonna share some information.
So, the only change to that amendment is that we can allow students to go from one to three. So, it's just a language change. And would the three Parks and Arts Commission student commissioners stand up? So, we have Caleb and Natalie. And they are going to be attending our meeting tomorrow at the Parks and Arts Commission. They attended last meeting and introduced themselves, explained a little bit to the commission why they wanted to be involved. Do any of you have anything you'd like to say or share with our council?
Is there anything they'd like to know?
Do you have any questions for our future student commissioners?
Not a question as much as with all you guys. It's hard in a city our size to find people to volunteer their time. Even with adults, you volunteer technically tough. So, as youth, to volunteer your services and your time to the city is a standing ovation for that. So, thank you very much for that.
I'd like to say something also if I could. I was at, I attended the last meeting, it was just three folks showed up and gave a little talk. And one question was, why did they want to be involved? And I thought all three of you did. Excellent job. I think it made me just touch lightly on and speak up versus coming up here and you could tell us again why you wanted to be involved? I thought it showed great work from you.
Okay, for me at least, I've lived here for, I think, around 14 years. And throughout that time, I've attended, you know, a lot of like the events that we have, especially at Pavilion Park. And I've always really enjoyed that, so I thought the Parks and Arts Commission would be a really cool way to evolve myself about.
Yeah, I've lived here ever since I was three and like throughout the summers, like some of my favorite memories with my family, we're going to all the different events at Pavilion Park and the movie nights and stuff like that. And so, I thought it'd be fun to kind of be able to help plan those things since they were such a big part of my life.
Um, I think that this is such a great opportunity for me because I think it's really important that I be involved in my... because I think it's really important that I be involved in my community and be helping make decisions and planning things. So, yeah, I'm very excited.
Good, thank you.
How come you didn't ask Kate?
So, April 3rd, our next meeting is, is very busy, so I'm going to go over a couple things. So, one is the second read ordinances on the Parks and Arts Commission youth changes that you just discussed, also the Verizon franchise. We'll bring you back Plinkie's lease, that would be the restaurant lease, the fireworks contract, the Centennial Trail Agreement with the county. And if I'm not mistaken, Jen, that's $20,000 for our participation in that. The snow equipment leasing that Steven spoke about at the workshop. The award of the traffic signal at Signal, so this is the one at Appleway and Signal. Andrew's back, so he'll be able to get that brought forward. And then the last item that I have is the award of the bid for Orchard Park that we talked about in the workshop. So, lots of action on April 3rd.
Mr. Mayor, I had one comment regards to ordinance 245A. In reading that, I know it explained in there, the members were residents of Liberty Lake, but then it went on to say, residents of Liberty Lake or own or work at a business in the city. I'm more comfortable that we have all of our members, these city residents, that I know we have one or two who are not, which is fine. But I think you should consider changing that to have where the individuals are residents of the city versus just somebody has an owner or works at a business in Liberty Lake.
So, when it comes to the Parks and Arts Commission, Jen and I just exchanged glances. So, everyone that's on the Parks and Arts Commission is a resident of Liberty Lake?
Yes.
At this time, but so, we, I'm trying to think, if you wanted to amend the motion to make them a resident?
We can amend it in the next, the next meeting, but if you want to add the, add the language.
At the second read.
I just wanted to bring it up for discussion, if the council wanted to discuss it.
We did have a doctor in town that doesn't, he just lives outside of Liberty Lake, but his business is in Liberty Lake, and he was interested in being on the Parks and Arts Commission. So, you know, we kind of thought this was a community thing. And so, I, I don't know, do we limit the number of people that reside outside the city? Because it's by district.
It's by, it's, it's by district.
And then at large.
Yes, right. And then adjunct.
And then an adjunct, yeah.
Well, just keep in mind that we allow non-city residents to be on planning commissions. So, I think you'd be a little bit grateful to look at this.
Like, limited to.
Right.
Well, that's, that's something to look at on April 3rd. Okay, anything else? Citizens' comments, see? Twenty-one minutes, on top, Tom.
Free, clean, mayor, council, staff, and citizens. In anticipation of tonight's discussion of Orchard Park, I thank you all for your good comments, questions. And probably, I'm having the right attitude about how we're going to proceed or if we're going to proceed. Especially with Councilmember Moore for the last year-plus that I've been coming here trying to prioritize capital projects, strategic plan, aiming nothing related every time. I went and spoke to most of you in this room, to some of the city staff. Andrew and Katie gave me a primer, RJ did, on terms of financing. Knowing that we were going to lose at least $500,000 of the monies that had been anticipated for the program. So, I went and had a nice, long talk with Joe Franks from Greenstone after learning how, whatever you decide, either to go ahead or not to go ahead, there's going to be work that's going to need to be done. Greenstone is going to build Harvest Parkway and is going to continue Indiana. There are about a dozen earth movers and heavy tractors moving as I speak. It's been going on full, full-time over there. However, the one thing that I encourage you, Joe Franks is interesting, and Greenstone, Greenstone is interested in helping after our monies run out. There may be things that they might be interested in helping with. And after I hung up the phone, or got off the, got out of Joe's office, he called Katie immediately and said, what are the projects that may not be able to be done in a phase? So, they are interested in being in the partner that they have, and which I think is going to happen. The one thing that Joe cautioned us to do, and that you might want to consider for the next time to come around, is to expand the parking that's going to be coming off of Indiana. That's the parking that we were talking about completing first. Because Pavilion just didn't have enough to begin with. And if we're not going to have two parking lots, it'd be better to, to consider changing the design slightly to accommodate under 10, 15, or 20 cars on the first build on the base, and then coming back with community. So, thank you all for your consideration. Thanks, Colin.
Any other comments? I hear you, we're going to go to the executive session, positions of the state, the personnel. You can name the standards for 766. You should tell them about some of the requirements.